All have Navy.
Okay, welcome everyone to our city council study session. We have a really important conversation ahead of us today on our budget. So I will turn it right over to Alison Zels, our city administrator.
Thank you, Council President, Mayor, members of the public, City Council. We have a lot of staff members here today as well. Want to just start off by thanking them for their hard work that they put into the original two-year budget and then the adjustments that were made for the supplemental 2025 budget. So this is a really important study session for you today to talk through what the recommended budget is and any changes that you might want to see with it. And I'm trying to click. Thank you. We do look at your foundational principles and strategic priorities in trying to determine what we think is necessary to bring forward, both for baseline and continuing services, and then any adjustments that are recommended for decision packages. You may recall that supporting the construction of market rate and affordable owner occupied housing is a, one of the pillars that you raised up within the strategic priority of affordable living, investing in public realm, so a lot of your capital improvement projects, and then developing that transition plan for post 2030 power supply needs. So you'll see that towards the end of the presentation in the Rochester Public Utilities section. And we've been on this march of the budget as a staff at least for quite some time. We start updating in February. We do not update the six-year CIP during the supplemental year, but we will be coming back with a couple of adjustments that happened since the end of 2023. So we did come forward in June with some information about that. The city administrators recommended budget is before you now, and we have the full book online, so you can go to the link of budget documents. And if you would like to get me deep into the budget and see all of the details that is available there. Of course, September 9th is when we have planned to bring you the preliminary levy, after which the levy can only stay the same or go down. And then budget hearing and budget adoption is scheduled for December 2nd this year. So be thinking about these policy considerations. Do you have any questions or feedback on the 2025 recommended supplemental? Do you have feedback, concerns, positive, negative about how we're looking to sustain our core services or invest in strategic growth? And is there any, do you have any recommended changes either to the tax levy? And if so, is that up or down? And if it's down or up, what were you recommending either adding or subtracting from the budget? So I think it's important to just ground us in, we are a growing community. We continue to be a growing community. We're sort of in that growing upward stage, but you can see back in 1950, the light yellow, we had less than 30,000 population. Fast forward to 2010, and we were already at that hundred, almost 107,000 population. And you can see the growth, which is demand for services, demand for parks, demand to maintain those, and demand to be able to deliver on a much larger geographic area. And then from that 2010 timeframe to the 2024 estimate of 125,000 folks, you can see we continued to grow. Less outward, more upwards, you're seeing less annexation, less actual growth of the city limits later on. But again, that's still more people that are driving on roads and utilizing services. During that same time, and you've seen this graphic before, we have added a lot of infrastructure, a lot of support. We have had new technology come along that we've taken advantage of. We've contracted for certain services, but the number of FTEs has remained pretty, pretty flat, considering the type of growth that we've seen in that 1980 to 2022 timeframe. We do have some preliminary, very preliminary estimates of the valuation growth, growth in property. And again, that is the first absorption of any property tax levy, whether it's an increase, a decrease, or flat. We do know that this is very early information, and we were on a call with the county last week, and there was some indication that we're seeing, we might see more growth in the net tax capacity, which means more absorption based on new value and new construction. And of course, you've seen new construction when you've gone around town, so that's positive. And we've also seen that in our building permits that have been coming forward. So I would expect that number to increase, the absorption rate, but I can't confirm that with county data yet. And during that same timeframe of that 2014 through last year, we've continued to see decreases in the amount of local government aid that has been coming to the city. We've been trying to control as much as possible our property taxes, but it just gets more challenging as you're serving more people in larger areas and having more infrastructure that we need to be able to support. And you can feel free to stop me if you have any questions, I guess, through the chair. I do always like to show this graphic, the actual change of tax levy has varied significantly year over year. Again, this is not the actual rate that people pay. This is the year-over-year change in the tax levy. And you can see in 2021, we had that zero levy year. The only increase there was to support the referendum that was approved for the parks referendum. And we have seen a change in the 2025 projection. The vast majority of what you're going to see today is the same as what was shown to you in the original two-year budget, but we did have a couple of major changes within that timeframe that pushed what was an 8.55% increase up over that 10%, pushing that dollar amount closer to 10.5 million. And we've always shown a projection where the 2026 year was going to be more than 2025. That's primarily related to some debt service that will come online. So you can see the decision packages, and there is actual dollar amounts related to these in, in the budget presentation that we provided to you in April. These all add up to about $1.5 million. The fire marshal and fire inspector vehicles, for example, we added a fire marshal and fire inspectors and never added the vehicles. The fleet services fund has some challenges, and when we forget to do those things, we really need to add them in and then start depreciating the vehicles so it can be a revolving fund like it's supposed to be. Looking at that city website tool, subscription developer toolkit, I can tell you that we've changed directions on that. It's only $10,000, but before the, that end of the budget season, that will be coming out. But that was sort of a last minute information that we received. There's, I believe, three positions shown here, and there were two public safety community dispatchers that were added. That's new from what was in the proposed two-year budget. The cost to the levy based on other changes to 911 services and the budget is about $50,000. We've been having some significant challenges with overtime on call pay and being able to keep that staffed properly. So it seemed important to be able to bring that forward to you. Otherwise, the positions and, and the equipment that is here is what was shown in that April meeting. And again, it adds up to about 1.5 million. The actual amount of decision packages requested was closer to 2.6 million. So again, needs, wants, we're trying to be strategic, but we also want to support the community properly with those quality services, public safety stewardship. And of course, many of these you could probably put in the multiple category, depending on your view of them. And so when I had shown you that bar chart of the year-over-year changes in the levy, you can see in 2026, there's an anticipated increase of levy that is to support the part, the city's portion of the park maintenance facility moving north. We did receive state bonding for that, however, that wasn't for the full amount, which state bonding, bonding never is. And so we are projecting and have been projecting that in, in the budget. We're hopeful that with some of the announcements that have been recently been made by the Fed, that perhaps the interest rates that we projected here will come down. And so that may be an adjustment that you would see, but I can't guarantee that. So we project out in the budget. And then the remaining debt service is not, the remaining bars of debt service are not supported by the tax levy. They're supported by other funds, either sales tax, wastewater, RPU, et cetera. And it's just also important to note, we project out a very large capital improvement program. It's for six years. It wouldn't be surprising if that changed. We do try to be as accurate as possible about what we project for the capital improvement projects. But we would always, of course, come back to the council if there needed to be a change, an amendment to the budget. If the project is under budget, the unused funds do go back to the original funding source. So it's not like we just keep funds in a bucket somewhere. We, at the end of the year, we always close that out. And just want to point out, there have been some increases over the last couple of years based on inflation also for the payments in lieu of taxes. We do not just receive those from electric and water. It's also from the parking fund and the stormwater fund, as well as wastewater, water reclamation, as our wastewater friends would call it. But there have been some increases here from Rochester Public Utilities side of things. And I would say we, we should not be anticipating that amount of change typically in future years, because there is an inflationary portion that is related to the payment in lieu of taxes there from Rochester Public Utilities. But we shouldn't be just depending on that. It's intended to be related to services. And a couple of future things that we're not going to cover tonight, but just want it to be on your radar. Again, we don't update the six-year CIP, but since the end of 2023, when that was originally approved, we've had some movement with being able to gain the state bonding for the park maintenance facility project. And of course, the sales tax, we should have put tax there, but I guess we didn't want to put it too many times in this presentation. So we will need to update the projects related to the sales tax. Just again, we have the funding source, we have it projected in the budget, but we need to update the actual capital improvement plan budget for those two things. Destination Medical Center Capital Improvement Plan is always lagging this meeting based on the yes and yes model with the DMCC board and the city council. But again, those do not come from property tax, those expenses. And then we had come to you earlier this year for some allocations of the one-time public safety aid funding. And we've met again, and we expect that there might be some revisions to that. So again, does not impact the budget, but just wanted you to be aware of those things. So that was just setting the stage. The 2025 recommended tax levy and budget, the tax levy that's recommended to support the investments in the budget is 112 million. That's about a $10.5 million increase from last year, and the total budget is 689.4 million. That's inclusive of Rochester Public Utilities. So that's a pretty significant part of our budget, like $225 million. So it is Rochester Public Utilities, and that is coming from rates that folks pay for, for water and electric. All on one page, the budget adds up here. You can see that another significant part of the budget is that capital improvement program. So we have a lot of capital improvements that are coming to fruition in 2025. So you can see that jump from $183 million projection to $257 million projection. The amount that's coming from the tax levy is still relatively flat. And by relatively, I mean it's maybe going up $80,000, so it's not a significant change. And we did allocate the excess local government aid to capital improvements, and we anticipate that continuing to start to trend downward again, based on the formula. You can also see that operations is another significant portion of the budget at just shy of $400 million. And you can't really see the debt service because it's yellow and white, but that shows that the debt services, we have some ending payments for our debt service in 2025. That's primarily related to non-levy related debt service. So the year-over-year change again is 10.35%, which is not a tax rate. That is just the math between 2024 and 2025, and $10.5 million of levy gets you that number. We do have some anticipated, and these haven't changed from the original approval of the two-year budget. Sewer rates changed about approximately 1%. Electric going up 4% and water going up 5.5%. So those have withheld the projection based on, on two years ago, looking at this. And even though we have been increasing the actual tax levy amount, you can see even over the last 10 years that that has been a relatively flat net tax capacity rate. So I just think it's important to look at that. And then we had dipped down there in those post-COVID years. But we're entering a space of significant activity in the city. So that's just, and we haven't used nearly, not that I think we should be using all of our tax capacity, but the property taxes and the total tax capacity available, you can see, has, has trended together. So another way of looking at that is if you look at the green section, 16.25%. Last year, that was just a little over 16% of total revenue coming from the tax rate, or excuse me, the tax levy. So a very little portion of that large budget is actually coming from the tax levy, but obviously, it's very important to the community in understanding what that is. The largest share of funding actually comes from charges for service. So those are our rates that we have in our utilities. Primarily, we have some fees for service in parks and some other places, but those are much smaller. The lion's share is coming from utility rates and parking rates, et cetera. And then you can see it trends down from there. Miscellaneous revenue is also where you would see the payments in lieu of taxes coming into the, into the picture. So you will also see those in the general fund revenue pie. Another way of thinking about those decision packages and the changes to the budget is 9.5% of that levy change is baseline, which is significantly driven by employee services. We have 20 labor units that we bargain with in the city of Rochester, and that is always the lion's share of the levy change every year, going back, back and back, back. That's, it's just, we're a service industry, and we need people in order to be able to provide the services. We do still have about a little over 700,000 of holistic budget stability funding built in, but that's half of what it was in 2024. So you can see that the levy is starting to pick up more of the base cost of services again. We have addressed some deferred liabilities, like the equipment revolving fund that I had mentioned. And then there's 1.51% in decision packages, but we do always back out, and we always back this out in the projection, any one-time decision packages. So if it's the purchase of equipment, and then you start revolving it by setting aside the dollar amount necessary, that's, that's how that actually adjusts. And then we had projected outside agency requests to be flat from 2024 to 2025. Another way of looking at how this stacks up is reducing the amount of levy that you need based on that holistic budget stability fund reduction. The employee services is a significant amount of the levy adjustment, as mentioned, 8.76%. And that is a change based on what you saw before, based on some labor contracts that were, that were resolved. Capital Improvement Plan increase, there's a silver like pool in, in that number. And so the equipment revolving stabilization is to continue to try to adjust our formulas so that we're picking up with inflation, and we're actually able to revolve equipment and not have that come to you as a decision package for, for when we're replacing something that has never revolved. And then other is small things like utilities and software maintenance. We also look across all of the budget and make reductions where we can. Otherwise, that employee services would have been significantly larger. Decision packages, again, stacking up there at 8.85% impact to the levy. And you've seen this slide before, we reduce by almost the same amount, 713, cut in half the amount of but holistic budget stability funding that was available as we continue to move out of the pandemic. And of course, this isn't a replenished amount of funding. We received an amount, and we're utilizing it and can't rely on it in the future. And where does that go? The $12.1 million increase in general fund. And the lion's share of that is public safety and public works, which are oftentimes a 24/7 operation, depending on the time of year, if it's snowing, et cetera. But we have a lot of folks in that category that, it's, again, that's a very labor-intensive type of work. The property tax distribution in the general fund is the lion's share of the property tax. So of that 110.5 million, you were seeing about 70% of it go to the general fund. Not surprising, considering that is a lot of people in it that are 24/7 people. Municipal recreation is about 10.3%. The capital improvement plan has always hovered around 8% of the levy. Library, and then some of that debt service, a fairly, fairly small amount of debt service for a city of our size. And then the airport, we fund utilities and customs there. Just another way of looking at it, these are types of services that are very reliant on the tax levy and don't. I mean, there's some external funds that come for police and fire, some external funds that come for public works, and even obviously, the charges for service become important in the municipal recreation system. But there's not that much outside funding coming for the library. And just again, another way of looking at it, how reliant some of these different services are. So if you're looking at places where you wanted to make a budget reduction, those are the lion's share of where you would be able to reduce. The other funds do not impact the levy, other than providing payments in lieu of taxes that reduce the levy necessary. And you can see here again, how the projection works. We did show an increase in 2026. We know that we're lagging behind on our temporary part-time pay. As other types of government and, and private sector businesses, it's getting challenging to hire people. And so we do anticipate needing to make some adjustments there. And you can also see that the projected levy for the debt service picks up. We also do project out in 2026, that, that is when the state approved, I'm gonna get it wrong, paid family medical leave kicks in. And so we projected some adjustment for that. And so that, that's the projection. There also is some capacity built in for decision packages, but of course, that doesn't mean that they have to be approved or accepted. But we had a significant number of decision packages in both 2024 and 2025 that were not funded. Not to beat a dead horse, but the tax levy. So again, we do project for it to start leveling. We are in a period of coming out of that 0% levy and some of those other changes. And hopefully, we won't continue to see issues coming to us from the state that are unfunded. But we did receive the state bonding for that facility. So the projection line does include financing, moving the park maintenance facility north. We have to amend the budget, but the financing is, is shown in the tax levy projection. And you can see, we have had some increases in other revenue as well. We have increases coming from a small increase from local government aid. Again, it's an increase that will start to decrease, so that is committed to the capital improvement plan. That's much more predictable funding. It doesn't tie to people. The hotel motel tax is continuing to go up. That's how we fund any improvements for the civic center. And if that continues to increase, then that will help to take that burden off of the general fund and other funding sources. Inspection permits, 2.5 million. That is where a significant number of those new FTEs for bold forward unbound, that's where we're projecting the funding, those positions, and those are in the budget. So they do conflate the FTE numbers and some of those charts, but we're also in a period of unprecedented amount of work that's going to be happening for those folks. So it's not as if we can utilize them for lots of other things. They're going to be busy working on delivering those projects and getting through the permitting process. And then the in lieu of tax, you can see that increase. But again, I wouldn't anticipate that continuing to rise at that rate. A few other areas, so non-fee revenues for parks and recreation. Looking at, well, we can't see the bottom, but there are some increases, and we're coming back, staying a little bit more solid in the parking fund. We were seeing decreases there for quite some time, so this is positive. And then Rochester Public Utilities always has a small change in their charges for services. And this is where I wanted to just point out, we're coming down in the amount of population we each support as a full-time equivalent, but that's primarily being driven by those bold forward unbound positions. So the reason that you're seeing more capacity, staff capacity in that 2025 year is primarily based on those bold forward unbound positions. And if you think about the 2024 and 2025, we've also added some positions that are related to the link rapid transit coming on and the grant that we are anticipating. So not all of these are just, it's not a lot of capacity. It's capacity that's necessary in order to continue to move forward with the rest of the investments. And this was a chart we added last year that is always a shocker for folks. But when we're talking about the levy, these are all the levy-funded employee services changes. And when you are looking at the cost there between police and fire, and again, I wouldn't expect police to go up this much every year, but our police contract was pretty constrained. Our, our partners in LELS were pretty reasonable during the pandemic. And during those same years, there were a lot of increases coming to a lot of different police departments, because it was very challenging to keep people and to hire people. So we were very far below market there, and so there is a market, market adjustment that we did not predict in, when we were building out the 2024, 2025 two-year budgets. We predicted some of it, but not $4.5 million. Also had some changes to fire. You might recall that that contract actually finally came to you in a couple of months ago, and that was actually for a 2024 contract. So we're absorbing some of that late. And there are some increases there that would not typically happen. It's not just a traditional cost of living adjustment. Small changes elsewhere, just to point out, for example, music went down, but that position moved to more centralized communication. So that's part of why 311 public information went up. So it's not a, it's movement between departments. Another point to make is that the library, the adjustment there was centralizing IT services. So you'll see that information technology went up, what seems like a lot. But that was centralizing the IT services. So 202,000 of that is coming over from library. So it's not, it's not really a change, it's just a change in location for where the funding is occurring. And then public works, again, very labor-intensive prod, prod program area, there is an additional position there in public works, but the remainder is, is wage settlements. And this is all of that on one page. So the changes to teammate expenses in the general fund were 11.2 million. And you might recall the number from a prior slide that we were in the 12.1 million dollar range of change to the overall general fund. So the vast majority of the changes there are employee services, employee-related. Library, again, going down, but really, it's moving over to IT. Municipal recreation went up slightly. That's primarily related to the, the part-time seasonals. And then Rochester Public Utilities saw an increase, but that isn't related to the levy and a few changes in the other funds. So that's a pretty large net increase of 10%. But again, a lot of that is being driven by some of the public safety settlements. And we continue to shift some of the health and dental to employees, but that's a pretty good trend to have on health and dental of 5, 5%. And a little over 3% adjustment there. There are cities that will sit in the 10 and 15% range there. Again, we did not recommend any changes to the economic development and community reinvestment funding. So for the outside agencies that are funded, we had recommended flat year-over-year. We talked about that in April. And just another way of looking at the expenditure categories, we do see changes that happen in the capital improvement plan. And so you saw, see the yellow bar changes probably the most. And of course, that also influences all of the other charges that we have. Debt service is fairly flat. We already talked about the general fund a lot, but we're gonna do two more slides of it. It's our least restricted fund. The vast majority of the funding for it is coming from the tax levy, but there are, there is other revenue that comes in. So this is where I wanted to point out that miscellaneous revenue, 15, we're pretty reliant on those payments in lieu of taxes in the general fund in order to try to keep up with costs and also be reasonable about the levy adjustment. Intergovernmental, that is your LGA, and some other funding that comes into the general fund in the way of grants and other funding that we get from the state, primarily the state, and then some other taxes. So there is a little bit of hotel motel that comes here. Isences and permits, again, that's, that's that large number that's increasing, and that goes to help pay for permitting and building services. And parks and rec mostly showing up as charges for government services, but there's also a little bit of, there are a couple of other departments that have small charges. And just important to talk about is the fund balance. So we have a little shy of $52 million in unassigned fund balance. That's just seems like that's just sitting there, but it's really important, because we get most of our revenue in the general fund twice a year. So we have those payments that are coming in from tax levy, those come in in January and late June, early July. So the rest of the year, we're floating the, the expenses with the fund balance. So we meet and exceed the state auditor's recommendation of five months of expenditures. And right now, we're sitting at that 48% at the end of 2023. But as the general fund grows, then the amount of fund balance necessary to meet that 42% also grows. And that's why every year, we don't just spend our budget. We try to control our costs as much as possible throughout the year, and the remainder goes into the general fund balance. Special revenue funds, so these are for specific purposes, once you assign dollars there. Possibly there could be a council action that would bring the dollars back, but really, they are intended to be specific funds for specific purposes. So if you look at the municipal recreation fund and how your charter works, once So if you look at the municipal recreation fund and how your charter works, once you are allocating the budget as a city council, then the governing board of the charter of the recreation Parks and Recreation Charter Board is helping to move through the budget implementation side of things. So really, this is probably your largest influence outside of some of the other actions you've taken on capital improvement in order to influence the recreation program. So you're assigning, if this budget is approved, 16.3 million dollars of revenue to that special revenue fund that has its own fund balance, not very much right now. And so this is the Soldier's Field Aquatics area where we're operating the aquatics. We've got the Phase One improvements to Silver Lake starting in the fall, hopefully, including a pool. Then the Park Levy with those accelerated investments that you've made. We've seen some additional playgrounds cleaned up and going in and being improved. Again, there's that higher part-time seasonal staffing cost. So we did adjust the wage grid to try to get everybody on the same wage grid. And there are two FTEs that are currently working. That was approved in the 2024 budget, but that is funded by Central Business District. It's not funded by the levy, and they're focused downtown. The Library Special Revenue Fund, again, you would be assigning 9.9 million dollars of levy to the Special Revenue Fund of the Library. And at the end of the year, they do better than budget. It stays within that fund. So again, higher part-time staffing costs, we didn't even quite make it all the way with some of the adjustments there. Some costs for technology and software, which is true in some other parts of the budget as well. And then there, this number does include a decision package for a library safety and security position. And then a Special Revenue Fund of the Airport, the vast majority of that budget of 5.4 million is not coming. It's coming from the operations of the airport. There's about 600,000 that comes from tax levy, and that's to support the utilities and customs operation. So there's a small change there. We do anticipate moving forward with some capital projects. Again, those are not levy impacts. We've continued to apply for grants to do the terminal sustainability improvements, as well as the parking lot improvements with solar. We are seeing some new revenue to the airport coming from the changes in the fees for the parking lot, which has been helpful. And we've seen some additional use of the of the parking lot. We'll be doing that reconstruction, hopefully, if we are able to be successful with state bonding and federal support. Transit is a special revenue fund. The vast majority of the 14.9 million is coming from state and federal funding. The remainder of it is coming from the Fairbox, as well as partnerships that we have with some key employers in town that provide direct funding for their employees to ride. We are anticipating that Link Rapid Transit will start, so we're in that Phase One of staffing for the 2024, 2025 budget. This is where those officers will be paid from. The additional officers and sergeant for the transit the new transit line of Link. And we are looking at the paratransit program. That's, we've seen a lot of improvement there, and we're continuing to work on it. And then some other significant capital projects. You saw the vehicles for the microtransit pilot that we're doing. We're procuring, procuring buses in order to get ready for Link. They have a long lead time. Ongoing bus stop improvements, those are slightly funded with three years of property tax levy. But they are, they are going to make a big difference in the accessibility of the transit riders. And then the North Broadway Park and Ride also will be operated out of the Transit Fund. And the the construction of that is fully funded by the state and federal government. Enterprise Funds, a little bit different than Special Revenue Funds. These are intended to be self-supporting funds. They are supposed to operate like a business. They are charging fees and rates that are related to the services provided and that their customers pay in order to receive the service. So the Parking Fund, these are like utilities. So parking utility is another way of thinking it of it. Small increases anticipated in the Parking Fund, as we've talked about multiple times. There are some significant improvements coming to the ramps, and we've got some capital investments to make. So that is the lion's share of changes. So restoration of the Center Street ramp, some restoration to Second Street. We came forward with the parking rate evaluation. So the the fee schedule will also need to come forward before the end of the year for both parking fees, but also all the other fees for service that the city charges. And then we're looking at ramp equipment and technology upgrades, which will be important in order to be able to be strategic in some of those rates and determine whether or not we might be able to provide some relief for certain users of the ramp. And then, of course, the Ramp Six debt service is also paid for from here. Waste Water Fund, Water Recommendation Plant, depending on how you like to talk about it. There's actually a reduction in the recommended 2025 budget. But we have that big upgrade starting in 2024, at the end of this month. You had approved the contract for that project to upgrade the wastewater plant. We've got some pretty significant sewer system expansions that are also underway necessary in order to be able to have some greenfield development. And then the current debt scheduled is scheduled to be paid off in 2026, meaning that we can then be financing that new project out of the wastewater plant without increasing the rates significantly, because we flattered our debt appropriately. And then, again, the increase in the wastewater user rates and fees are still recommended based on the rate study. Stormwater, those are primarily capital improvement projects and capital maintenance projects. So completing that surface water management plan, looking at implementing in 2025 and associated projects coming from that. Also, the utility rate study is planned for 2025 to determine whether there need to be adjustments in the future. But right now, there's no changes planned for the stormwater rates. And now you don't have to listen to me anymore, because Tim is going to either come up or stay there and talk about Rochester Public Utilities.
Good evening, Council Mayor. I can walk again, so I'm happy to walk up here. Related to the RPU budget, this has been presented to the RPU Board at a study session earlier this month. And I'm here to present just on the overall budget assumptions that are being recommended, that will be recommended, I imagine, by the RPU Board. As always, we are targeting strategic financial targets and setting rates over our long-range plan. And this really is setting us up for success for our 2030 plan, which has about 1.2 billion dollars of capital investment in the next five to six years, either through direct construction or partnerships and long-term contracts. You will hear more about that. I believe we have a study session scheduled for September 16th to go into a little bit more detail there. But I'll walk through the two enterprise funds here. For the Water Utility, we're seeing modest growth here, both in consumptive and customer growth. The single largest driver in the water budget recommendation, at least in last year and this year, is the advanced metering project that we will be moving forward with starting next year. That has been the largest portion of the increase in the customer charge to fund that upcoming. It's an overall 33 million dollar project, and a good portion of that comes from water. So this is putting some stress on the water budget as a smaller utility and with the need to get into just about every house and basement over the next few years. We are at the end-of-life cycle of our water meters, and so it's a needed investment into the future. It also sets us up from a data perspective to be successful in the in this next phase. You can see there's a change in net position next year. That's really because of some drawdowns of cash to fund the advanced metering project. So we are building up cash last year and this year in anticipative, in anticipation of mass meter deployment at the end of '25, just about a year from now. For the Electric Utility, this is one that you'll be able to hear a little bit more. We just completed a 20-year financial forecast that outlays all those major capital investments over the next few years. So the 4% rate increase is really driving towards those needed targets of debt service coverage and cash needed for this next phase of investment. We did do a customer charge increase last year for electric, but that was enough and sufficient to do the electric portion of the advanced metering project. On one of these slides, it said AMI. AMI is the abbreviation for advanced metering infrastructure, not area median income. So I apologize for the slight confusion on acronyms there. I will also share that there is a proposal in front of the RPU Board tomorrow night to make some slight adjustments to the pilot formula. One of the challenges that we've recognized over the last few years has been the variability of the pilot from RPU, because it's based on a commodity sales formula and also an escalator, a base rate that escalates with inflation. If you think back over the last five years, there's been some swings in sales post-pandemic recovery. And especially in the high inflationary period that we've been in in the last cycle. It's created a challenge for budget predictability of the pilot. So I am, I've worked with city administration with Allison to work on a fix that will help improve the predictability into the future on the pilot and with some minor tweaks there. The the most material change that's being recommended there in previous years, where there was a 0% rate increase on the utility side, there was no escalator on the CPI or inflationary. So we're making that tweak to create more forward stability, because both of those indicators, both commodity and inflationary look back, and we're predicting what's going to happen in the future. So we'll be forecasting those more conservatively into the future. We're very good most years in forecasting commodity sales, but there is variability with seasonality. Last year was a very dry summer, and our water sales were significantly higher. Pilot was higher therefore. And this year, as hot as it is today, we're actually tracking slightly lower than our predicted volume of electric sales. You might say that's overall a good thing, but that also impacts the pilot formula, looking back. So that'll be in front of the RPU Board tomorrow night. These, this budget is built upon the assumption that that will move forward. And there's been general support from the RPU Board to make those adjustments in, when we reviewed it earlier this month. There are two FTEs and two conversions. I call these the three Ps, helping us support our procurement activities with the buyer, our people with perfecting the the HR business partner and moving that into the budget that you approved earlier this year for RPU, as well as rebate processing. So the the three FTEs are really supporting the core services within RPU, within the Enterprise Fund. And you'll also see very soon, if you're looking closely, we'll be reserving, we have about 115 million of cash in the cash reserves right now. We'll be targeting, making a recommendation to the RPU Board here in about October to dedicate 50 million of that in a special capital project fund for some of these future needed capacity and energy investments. So that has been a strategic buildup of cash, knowing that we're approaching the end of our SIMPA contract here in six short years, and it's time to execute on our plan. And with that, I will turn it back over to Allison, I believe.
100%. So that is the budget presentation. It is a lot of information in probably what felt like a lot of slides. But it's less slides than the 600-page budget. So trying to give you the large overview of the budget. We do have a lot of teammates here. Again, I do want to thank especially our finance team, Rachel, Josh, Brian, Aaron, for all of their hard work putting this together. But for their hard work and the hard work of the budget teammates that work on this from each department, the changes in those employee services would have been a much large, a larger absorption within the tax levy based on the market adjustments that occurred. That would have, we would, we were able to absorb a fair amount of that through other changes and reductions that we go through line by line in the budget in order to see what are the trends, what are we using, and what do we need? So with that, I would open it for any questions. I know we also have folks here, if there's a question I can't answer or that needs more detail.
All right. Thank you, Administrator Zalms. And Tim, questions? Councilmember Palmer? Or comments? Discussion?
Thank you. I got quite a few here. So let's go to the public safety aid. You're going to come back with us with the recommendations. You did that in the past. Are you using the same discussions that we had with that? Or is it something big changing on that?
Councilmember Palmer, we're you, we're starting from those discussions, but we have had some changes based on being able to get some other grant funding. The way that some of the conversation have progressed with the county being a partner for some of the homeless outreach. And then we had not allocated about $900,000 worth of that. And so there has been some discussion with the team about ability, needs or or ability to utilize that in a way that focuses on that as one-time funding. So not looking at trying to do something that would increase the budget going forward. But if there are offsets that we could make.
So so how does that fit into the police budget? The police budget comes to us. We approve the police budget. Is that the city council that does that?
Correct. The police budget is part of the overall budget document. But what you would be doing in order to approve a change for that is you would be authorized, allowing whatever those allocations are, whatever revisions of those allocations are. And then also would be amending the budget in order to be able to provide for the purchases. If it's a capital item, it would still come back to you for contract and purchase if it's over $50,000.
Okay. Can you go to Slide 18? I have some questions on your wastewater connection fee.
Thank goodness Tyler is here.
He's waiting eagerly.
This one?
Okay, yep. So on the wastewater connection fee, you're increasing approximately 3.5% annually. And that's that's increased cost of wastewater treatment plant infrastructure due to new construction. Is that new construction only for new construction, or is that for we're building a new plant or adding to the plant?
I believe it is a combination, but I believe that that one is primarily the trunk sewer fee. But maybe Tyler Niemeyer could provide you more detail.
Yes, that's correct. You get it right, Allison.
Explain that to me.
It's primarily the trunk trunk sewer fee, but it it does impact both sides of it, both the capacity and the capacity at the plant and capacity in the sewer line. So it's capacity increases both to treat and to convey.
So are we charging only the new buildings coming into Rochester, or are we bringing that throughout Rochester residents?
I mean, there also are overall rates that are paying in order to maintain the facility and operate the facility. So I guess it depends on how you look at the wastewater plan, how it operates. But having additional capacity benefits those specific developments. But it also, I don't know that it entirely offsets the cost of service in the other rates that others pay.
Maybe it helps to clarify that the 1% is the PIF and the 3.5% is the trunk sewer rate increases.
That does. No, thank you. At the library, you have a security person there. We got a grant last year for it. This year, we're going to pay it out of the of the budget. So that's one of the bugaboo's I have is grant funding is that that we get it, and then we're going to keep it in the in the budget. And that and that worries me when we accept grants.
So Councilmember Palmer, I believe that grant came from the library, friends of the library. And it was very clear that the physician would be hired as a limited-term appointment in case this wasn't approved in the in the ongoing funding of the budget.
Can I build on that, because it's?
Let me, let me finish. I want to, I want to be consistent in in what we do. And so we have security for the ramps. We charge the ramps. We have security for the library. Why don't we let them work it out of their own budget? They have a budget that we don't look at. We just give them a bunch of money.
Well, the vast majority of the library is funded with tax levy. So they would either need to make other decisions about how they operate or not have this position. And that would, it would technically be up to them, but yes.
But but you're asking us to give them more money for this position. Again, I go back to the ramp that we had the discussion last week. And the ramp discussion was, we had securities coming out of the Enterprise Fund. I I don't understand why it doesn't come out of the, just the library budget and let them figure that out.
It's a function of how the library is funded. So the Enterprise Fund, which acts like a business and charges fees per service for all that they do, is funded that way, because in government account accounting, an enterprise fund should pay for itself. You could make the determination that that could should come from the levy, I think was also part of the discussion. But 87% of the library is funded with tax levy. That's going as a special revenue fund. The other lion's share of the revenue that's coming in for them is actually the county, county share of the tax. So it's very reliant on tax levy. I'm recommending it based on concerns that the library had about behavior that they have been experiencing and that it's been very challenging for them to have library aides. I do have Kim Edson here, if she would like to come forward. But it has been a concern of theirs that it's also taking away from their other services when they have people step away from the desk. And they have seen an increased amount of use of illicit drugs and other paraphernalia in their bathrooms. And so when that happens, in the past, they were immediately, I don't know if it was immediate. Their main source of contact would be Rochester Police Department, which takes some time to get there. And it's unlikely that it's a priority call, and so they have had some concerns. So that's why it's recommended, but it's up to the city council whether you want to fund it.
Okay. And then on the outside agencies, you're keeping it flat. Why wouldn't we just increase it by the amount of inflation, at least to keep our organizations up to up to a level that we like?
Well, traditionally, the outside agencies Well, traditionally the outside agencies funding hasn't changed much year over year. It, it changed occasionally every five, six, 10 years, but it's not intended to be directly related to increases to their budget. It's intended to be supplemental to the budget of the outside agency. And we did notify them that if they had requests that they could reach out to the city council directly. I don't know if they've reached out to you.
I guess my concern is, is that if their fees are going up and, and we know that when we've talked with them, that their largest cost is the increase of, of labor and that's our largest cost. I mean, our part timers at Park and Rec are getting more money. Why wouldn't we want to just give them a little boost for inflation?
Just traditionally, that is not how we have funded the outside agencies in the city of Rochester. They have not received incremental increases since, since the outside agencies started receiving funding from the city of Rochester.
So if we had four council people who wanted to do that, would that be November? We'd make that vote when we?
You would need to do that in September, I would argue, unless you are also coming with corresponding cuts because that would be coming from the tax levy.
Okay. In lieu of taxes, is there a reason that we don't double that or we don't increase that?
I think it's really important that we have a defensible formula for all of the different utilities that pay the payment in lieu of taxes. The, each one does have a formula, but it should have some relationship to the value, either if it was a taxable entity or if there's other services or if there's charges for service versus payments in lieu of taxes. So I think if we were going to look at something like that, doubling it would be arbitrary. And I, I would argue that the, the financing groups that look at us for our bond grading would question what, what is the relationship to, what is the formula related to? Why, why are you just trying to make, and I'm just going to use this word, an easy political decision in order to charge ratepayers instead of the tax levy? So that should have some relationship to either the cost of service or some formula that is meaningful. And I don't think doubling it would probably tie back to a discussion. We could look at all of our payments in lieu and determine whether or not we thought that they were reasonable. That would be what an internal auditor would typically do.
Do we have a study that, that we use that this is why we, we charge this in lieu of taxes?
We have the formulas.
We do?
Yes.
And that's, is that a study compared to other, other people? Is that what it would cost is?
It's specifically related to a formula that has been set by the city of Rochester in the past. So if I recall correctly, the, the stormwater wastewater and parking payment in lieu of taxes is direct as a percentage of their revenue. And Rochester Public Utilities is a more complicated formula that is going to be more predictable in the future, thanks to a partnership with Mr. McCullough.
So what I'm, I'm hearing back from you on this is that the city of Rochester, which would be the city council, set that percentage based on a study or based on a feeling or?
Not a feeling. I don't believe that there's been a study, but based on reviewing what are the actual costs and cost distributions and a logical formula based on how the utility works and how it, for example, all of the parking ramps could be taxable buildings. They could be commercial, they could be retail, they could be an apartment, they could be contributing to the tax base. Instead, we have parking ramps that are contributing to all the other buildings that are contributing to the tax base. People are paying for that and we have a payment in lieu of taxes for that. The, the water department in some cities is actually, and electric in many cities, is a private entity. And so they actually pay property taxes on their private investments or, and a franchise fee. So we could look at many different ways, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't be looking at that in relationship directly to the property tax. It would be in relationship to the value of that utility beyond just providing funding to the general fund. So I can't tell you 15, 20, 30 years ago when these were set, I believe that the payment in lieu of taxes for RPU was set in the eighties, but there was some logic to that when that was established, just like for the wastewater fund, for the stormwater fund, for the parking utility, that had some relationship to the budget at that time. We could look at it again, but probably not before September 9th.
I guess I'm not looking for it by September 9th, but I like to have at least rationale such as done in the eighties and things have changed that we've come back and come up with a formula that works for everybody.
And I, I believe that that is why Mr. McCullough and the RPU board is looking at that tomorrow.
Well, that's, that's the board. I mean, balance things out and that's what our job is to balance things out. So as you know, I do support your tax, our tax levy increase that you have, and I appreciate your presentation today.
Thank you for the questions.
Other discussion? Just a quick follow-up on that grant funded conversation. So I assume that as we have grants coming in that do fund positions for a few years, that there's, that we're constantly assessing and evaluating whether that should be a position that continues. So I was just going to ask you or the library team to share a little bit more about why that position should continue, but you, maybe, Kim, if you're willing to step up?
Thank you, President Carlson and the board. I believe that we had a DP in 2024 for the security and specialist as well, and it was deferred from 2024 to 2025. This is a critical need for the library. We have seen a significant increase in problem behavior since we reopened after the pandemic and it has taken a lot of time from library teammates to deal with problematic behavior and that, that administrator sounds talked about. When it wasn't funded in 2024, we went to our Rochester Public Library Foundation because it was a critical need and we didn't think we could make it a whole year before we got funding again. The other advantage to having positions funded by grants is for our ability to evaluate whether or not they're actually effective. And I do have some preliminary data.
Thank you.
In 2023, during the same period of time, when we didn't have the safety and security specialist, we had 75 incidents. This year, with the safety and security incidents during the same period of time, we have 55. The other thing is the mission of the library is to be welcoming all to help people connect and learn. The welcoming piece is really a critical function of the safety and security position. We regularly do surveys when people use the library and during the time that we've had the safety and security specialist, the number of people who find the library to be welcoming has increased, 87% increase compared to 76 before, and much fewer strongly disagree. It went from 11% to 2% who strongly disagreed about the welcoming community and it gave the library staff time to focus on the connecting and learning for our customers.
Thank you for taking time to share that. That's what I was hoping you were going to say is talking about how this helps the library maintain its presence as an inclusive space in our community. And, you know, we value our police department very much, but having police officers come in and out of a space compared to having somebody who's there consistently and is trained in a way that the library staff engages with regularly, I think is a really strong practice. So I'm glad you're finding that effective and sounds good to me. All right. I have other comments, but I'll hand it over to Councilmember Keen.
Thank you. First, I wanted to go back to our, this is supplemental budget. When we were closing in December of 2023, what did we project 2025 levy impact to be? Was it slightly below 10.35?
I believe it was 8.55%. Yes, I'm getting a nod from Rachel.
So I was just going to try to get a little feel for, I mean, you talked a little bit about the deltas that have happened since then. Is it, I'm, I'm trying to get my head around the, the chart I saw, which showed labor being nine, almost 9% of it. Has, has a lot of that been changed over the last seven or eight months?
Significant amount of that was settling the police and sergeants contracts and the fire contracts. So that was much higher than what we had projected in that 8.55%. We had projected the normal 5.5% increase, but when you're seeing some of those land closer to 10%, not because it's a cost of living adjustment, but because it's a $5 an hour market adjustment, which then influences overtime and influences those other things and still puts us at the median.
And just point of order, we've already approved those labor contracts.
We have already approved those labor contracts.
No, no, it's, it's a good point that I, that I am bringing out that these are, these aren't things that are coming up today. These are things that we've been, that we've made decisions on going through the year, some of them in private because labor related, but this is the culmination of it. But with that said, that's happening and anybody that's running a, you know, a people-centric business in 2024 knows these between the labor costs, but also the scarcity of labor and competing for labor. So the, these aren't big surprise for me this year, but I guess projecting out, I'm surprised we're not coming down off these faster.
We, we are and we aren't. So we also approved a 4% cost of living adjustment within that police and sergeant contract, which is likely to set a trend for some other department, other labor contracts that would come forward, not the market side of it, but the cost of living adjustment side of it. And we also still have never caught up with some of the part-time temporary. I mean, those like doubled to be able to get people in that. Granted, that's not the lion's share of our employment, but in some cost centers like parks and recreation, and they rely heavily on that in the summer, just related to the mowing equipment. You mow all at the same time, the grass grows the same amount. So if you could mow it all at the same time with more equipment and the same number of people, then they can more quickly get to all of the other work that the same number of people are going to be doing. We also needed to estimate something for the paid medical, paid family medical leave act that came through. We had made a minor adjustment, but it wasn't what the state actually authorized in 2026. So we could have crossed our fingers and hoped that we could absorb it, but I wouldn't want to come to you in the middle of the year and ask for contingency and then also have to adjust the next year going forward. And then there was the addition in the middle of the year of a little over 0.5% for Silverlake Pool, which is now designed, all of the design elements include a pool. And we had talked about, and I think you had raised at that time, remember when we come forward at the budget, it's the tax levy amount. But that's important, right? That's a, that's a transformational investment that you don't do every year. You pay for it and then, then you don't, well, maybe we'll have a new pool for 65 years from now or upgraded pool, but those are things that, you know, you lose that opportunity if you don't move forward with that, with the current design of, of Silverlake and you gain efficiencies of building it all at the same time. So the lion's share of this, and there was about $2.75 million of employment contract that we didn't anticipate from police, sergeants and fire. And when you see the increase only going from what was a little over nine after the pool got added to 10.35, that should be closer to 12 if we hadn't made all of the other adjustments in the budget and, and looked through it. So there was a scenario where I was a little concerned I was going to be standing up here talking to you about 12. And obviously you may have had conversations about decision packages, but we're also trying to continue to be more robust in how we do all of our services. Equipment operator, as we continue to grow and change roads is important to be able to maintain services one position for 55 square mile city with thousands of lane miles of road. And the library safety, security specialist, I mean, it's in a matter of opinion whether or not that's valuable, but it helps the efficiency of every other FTE that's already approved in the library.
Against on our police.
And, right, and our police being able to prioritize other calls for service or prioritize this is really, we have to get to the library, it hasn't been able to be navigated appropriately.
So I guess my comments, I'd be, I do understand that, you know, we, we were projecting this earlier, we had other things that came up, but I guess I am looking at the out years and not so much looking at the 10.35, but looking at the 11. And then it comes down to eight. I'm looking and going, our, our added properties are going up in more of the range of two and 3%. And a lot of that is appreciation as opposed to new properties. So I, I don't, I don't think we're in sync there. I know we are, say, as we've made decisions on things like pools, on things like the, the park and rec space and we're taking on debt, but I guess I'm, I'm just calling out that as the future goes on, that we've got to get more into like, uh, when CPI is going to go back down to three, we should be looking more in the five or six as opposed to our averages more like nine.
The future years come down because they are anticipating it be clo, being closer to that five and a half percent year over year in employee services.
Okay. Thank you.
I hope that holds.
Yeah. I want to respond a little bit on the discussion on pilot. This is something that this council did take up back in 2020 and looked and said like this isn't keeping up with these things. And I, I don't know if anyone else notices, but then we did nothing and we had these discussions, but never made a change. As RPU has pointed out in our last RPU meeting, we had quite a little brawl about this of saying like, you cannot, the city can't use a public utility as their piggy bank when they, when they're short of money. That's an inappropriate way to run a public utility and we don't want to be doing that. That's why we go back to having this as a set formula. But it was clear that there were things that were happening with our zero rate increase years that were making it so that we weren't keeping up. And I, I want to applaud the, the work to do to sort of say, let's do a reset on that and, and set it so that it keeps up better going forward. It's, it's doubly important now when RPU is going to be going out for loans, that somebody doesn't read our books and say, oh, this isn't run as a real business. This is run as a little piggy bank and we do not want any, any, anything to, to look like that.
Agree.
Thank you.
Just to clarify what you were just saying, so the anticipated contracts we're looking at settling next year or in two years, our upcoming union contracts are, the potential rates are factored into the out years for tax levy increase?
We did some adjustments in 2026. So 2026 was always projected to be higher primarily because of the debt service coming on. We did some additional adjustments to 2026 because we are anticipating in that year, we will have a slightly different trend than what we had anticipated. But in the out years after 2026, what we've seen in the current contracts is that the, the cost of living adjustment comes down in those outer years.
Okay. So that it is sort of factored in what we potentially are looking at?
Correct.
Okay. But we can't know until we've negotiated.
And I can't crystal ball what will happen in the labor market. I, it seems like it's improving, however.
And not all our contracts are, have an impact on our levy.
Correct.
But police and fire do. Yes. Okay. Councilmember Wall?
Thank you. I come to this discussion with a great deal of discomfort. A lot of media attention has been offered to our session this afternoon, using words like huge, whopping, large. And I think that by and large is the sentiment of the community that, boy, a 10.35%, understanding that's not the tax increase, just does seem so large when so much of it is out of our control. The property taxes that we levy are out of their control. I would guess that for most people in this room and most people in Rochester, our income is beyond our control, unless you choose to leave your job and hopefully secure employment at, at a greater rate. So that 10.35% seems just so large to me. I recall last year, a gentleman who came and showed us his property tax statements and even though we were only at eight point something, his personal taxes had gone up 39%. Granted, almost all of that, no, no, a good deal, most of it was due to reevaluation of his home and he understood that, but it still is a huge increase in a budget, a fixed budget that he doesn't have capacity to simply go and ask somebody for an extra thousand or two to help pay for that and other expenses. So I, I guess I'm trying to speak on behalf of, I think, a good part of Rochester. I'm not going to say poverty stricken, but I'm going to say people who are, are working hard and who will find 10.35% to be just exorbitant. And so I know that in emails that we have shared today, you would say, okay, then wall, where would you cut? And anything that I would say would, would cause alarm in a room full of people for whom I hold a high regard. I think that everybody agrees on this panel that virtually, not virtually, a huge part of our costs are all tied up in, in people. That's true of the industry in which I used to work. It's true of the industry in which my wife worked for her lifetime education, it's true of government, we're people centric. So the only way you can make a huge difference in a levy is through people. Would that be just a, yes, sir? I mean, I, there are other ways, but.
I would say by and large, yes, you would be reducing people and reducing services or not providing something anymore. And then the next year, you would see that same year over year adjustment off of a different number because you can only cut it, well, one thing once, you could cut more things.
Sure.
But it becomes challenging.
Yeah, it does. One of the strategies I know that many industries have used in, and not laying off people, but using natural attrition through the course of a year to save a percent or whatever the budget might be. or whatever uh the budget might be. Have we ever thought about using natural attrition uh for a time in order to stem some of uh the the very large increases uh that we have had to negotiate for?
I would defer to Aaron Parrish on that, but I think that that might be challenging in your labor negotiations and that you may end up with a grievance and still paying that or in arbitration and paying more. Depending on um where you're at, because having certain types of staffing, police might be an example, is you have to have a certain number of people on shift in order to actually provide the shift coverage. So for fire, you have to have a certain number of people on shift in order to like respond to certain scenes. So the two largest impacts you would very unlikely, it's very unlikely that you would be saving costs through attrition for that. Um, the library has done some of that as they're trying to adjust um how how some of their um part times and full times shake out. Um, but even that you would at some point be talking about different hours um for the library. Uh, for parks and recreation, we have done some things that people really did not like, um, like not having trash and certain pickup in certain parks. In order to be able to redistribute the um, the costs else, you know, the people's time elsewhere. Um, but very quickly, we learned that people would like to have that service. Um, and it's the expectation of the community as well. Um, if if we were going to have less cost for community development and for development services, then our um, some of our fees come could come down and we we have a small amount of tax levy that goes into that as well. Um, but the time to actually get your permits review would take much longer. Um, so there are impacts to each of these things, which maybe are acceptable to the community and to the city council. Um, but I would just say maybe um if Mr. Parrish wanted to say anymore about labor negotiations and some other changes that happened in state law that require us to also negotiate number of people.
Yeah, um, President, uh Mayor members of council, a couple of things. One, I think in general, if you're looking to lower your bottom line, I think it's always advisable to decide what you don't want to do. Um, we've done uh and have a history of doing that, both in like the financial crisis of 2008 and the pandemic, where we've basically frozen, you know, positions and and not rehired when vacant. Uh, what that tends to do is sort of distribute the impact unevenly. And so, you know, by happenstance, one department has more vacancy than another, the impact isn't sort of universally felt. Um, if you're talking about attrition on sort of a short term basis, um, we actually sometimes use that vacancy to cover the costs a lot of times when our employees transition. Um, they have certain severance payments that are made, and so there isn't as much pickup on the short term transition as you think. And then, as Allison mentioned earlier, um, we do use that also to contribute to our bottom line at the end of the year where we're trying to add to our fund balance so we can kind of keep our ratio in check there. Um, and and as she also mentioned, um, just this last year, you know, and we don't have this. And I think this is a, you know, subject of bargaining that we would engage in. But, you know, now staffing levels are sub permissive or maybe even a mandatory subject of bargaining. And so, you know, we don't want to generate those conversations. And we truly do have some areas that you would say, we're just not going to provide service if we don't adequately staff them.
Can I respond to Councilmember Wall?
I think that's up to you.
Okay, so I appreciate your concerns, and I think this is something we struggle with every year when we're faced with these really hard discussions and conversations. Um, and it's just really important to remember that the people in this conversation that are affected by property tax are parks, which our community expects very high quality services and in fact even more. You know, we're not, we're never doing enough in parks, so that's one bucket. Library, which is an award winning, very inclusive, special place in our community. Public safety, which both our police and fire are using incredibly innovative staffing models to think about how to be responsive to changing workforce trends and better meeting or even better meeting um and being responsive to community need. And I don't think since I've been on council, police has even been fully staffed, maybe one point for one minute. Uh, so we're already understaffed in our police department. So you you run into this wall of, okay, well, what, what do you cut? Do you cut one internal auditor position that will affect, you know, a tiny, tiny sliver of the tax levy and not have a real impact just because? I I don't know, it is an impossibly hard conversation. And from a policy perspective, when one of our top strategic priorities is providing quality services for quality living, all of those things dramatically increase people's quality of life in this community. So I just can't find it in myself to say, yes, we would reduce our staffing because these are, in my perspective, essential services. So just my two cents in response to you.
And and President Carlson, I don't disagree with anything that you said, nothing that you said. And for me personally, that that fits great. But if uh if I had trouble trying to find a $60 pair of tennis shoes for my seventh grader to go to school today or tomorrow, um, I would be in a different position. And I'm trying to speak
Yeah.
for those people.
Absolutely.
That this, and Administrator Zelms, you know that I absolutely respect the the work that you do. Um, and you, you actually trumped me by saying, you know, I could have asked you for 12 and I got it all the way down to 10.35.
She's clever like that.
I did not want to have to ask you for that.
I see what you did there. Um, you know, I just really am hopeful that uh departments and our administrator can come together to find ways to even shave things between now and September. I know it's a big ask, I know it's a big ask. I've had big asks of departments and places where I have uh I've been in charge, um, never comfortable, always hard. But 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 when we're at the, you know, ceiling currently of where we expect to go with levy and next year the ceiling even higher, uh, it it just uh, it's just very hard for me and it will be hard for me to look positively on decision packages um in in even though I know some of them would would garner great help uh for departments. So I mean, that's all I just, I come to this uh session very troubled today, and that's where I started, that's where I'll end.
I think probably all of us have felt that way every single time we've had these conversations. So I totally can relate and appreciate your perspective. And also, we are a growing city and we have to keep up. Um, I think we're funding some things that have been underfunded in the past, including our deferred maintenance, which I always say keeps me up at night, and it really does because we're either paying now and being really thoughtful about it or we're reacting. Um, so we, Allison, our Administrator Zelms has made a lot of really strategic decisions with her leadership team and all of you sitting around um to help make sure that we are able to eventually go the other direction and it's not just up and up and up because we're just responding to crisis after crisis. So anyway, I will hand it over to uh Councilmember Dennis.
All right.
Hope I'm good.
All right, thank you. I just, after listening for the last few minutes with Councilmember Wall, I just wanted to echo. Um, I agree, people are struggling. They see this increase of their tax dollar, tax levy, um, and they don't see an end in sight. Like when it's going to end, it keeps going up every year. We're be, we're out pricing people out of their homes, that people are struggling paycheck to paycheck. And I really truly believe that this has to stop. And I have voted against the tax increase the last couple of years because of this, because I've, I think there is a better way. We need, I've asked for a department audits, which has not happened. I've asked for more oversight. We are the oversight board, we are the ones who are the um elected officials who have the right to know where taxpayer dollars are going because citizens, residents have the right to know where their taxpayer dollars are going. And we don't know, we don't have a clue.
A point of order, Councilmember Dennis, the
It's not a point of order.
book is clearly articulated and available online, line by line budget items.
I have, I have
three to 600 page document, so please don't share that.
With all due respect, I have asked for example, I'll give you an example, the mayor's purchasing card. Um, or maybe how the city administration, where the purchasing card, um, I've talked to past council members, uh, one in Ward Six, who has said that they had the ability to look through department expenditures in the past, which we do not. So I
So I just want to point out that every month, the city council gets all of the bills and all of the accounts that there's an item on the consent agenda that has literally every single bill that comes through and that the purchasing cards post about six weeks after because of the way that purchasing cards work and that all of those are available through Open Gov, which is on our website.
Every other council meeting, a list of expenditures.
Well, I, for some reason, have not been able to access that.
If it's on every consent agenda.
Okay, could, could we have the mayor send her purchasing card agreement and the frequent flyer miles? That would be lovely. I just want to move on. I just wanted to say that that is stuff that I have not been able to see and that we can go into the perhaps violation of the Minnesota law 15.435 and how we are violating that as a city. But we, I'm not going to get into the issues. I do believe there is a separation of powers that's in the constitution. And um, the mayor is not a legislative, according to our partner, she is a
Councilmember Dennis Von.
So I am, I am bringing that up because I know people are struggling. And so as others have brought their lived experiences, I'm going to bring a really quick moment. As a single parent, I keep a very strict budget. And when I want to um look at how to lessen my expenditures, I can cut, yes, I can cut holidays expenditures, right? Cut a few hundred dollars, you know, not buy extended relatives gifts. Or I can go, I personally don't buy expensive coffee every day, but you know, they say to look at how, what we're doing every day. Are we buying expensive coffee every day? Cutting that will cut extreme amounts from our budget. And so as an oversight committee, I've asked this year after year. Um, I think that we need to have more oversight in how we do competitive bidding. Some projects are competitive bidded, some are not. And I feel that we need to make sure that every project has a minimum of making sure that we, we don't even go through with it without seeing if we can find a competitive bidding, how we sell property, not to our good friends downtown, but we have competitive bidding for those, I'm talking about doleys, right? And I'm um how we just gave it to the lowest bid without
Councilmember Dennis, move on, we've
These are, these are legitimate issues with the budget. I also would like to say
I'm going to call a five minute recess to reset, thank you.
Just because you don't like what I have to say doesn't mean you can silence me.
All right, welcome back, everyone. So Councilmember Dennis, I will turn the floor back over to you, but I am requesting that you stay in order. Please follow the rules. And if you have additional comments or questions, we we are ready to listen.
Okay, just for clarification, how was I not following the rules? I was bringing up things that we could do to help lessen the budget. So could you please help give me some understanding how I broke the rules, President Carlson?
I would ask our attorney to weigh in.
No, I'm asking you, President Carlson.
I'm asking our attorney and I preside
You often do, that's good.
Thank you, Council President, Councilmembers, Mayor Norton. Um, the only encouragement that I would give you is um, you've had a very robust and healthy and productive conversation so far today that's been quite focused on the budget and is substantive. Um, there's been a mix of topics that have come up now that have really been litigated um many times in the past. Um, as you correctly pointed out, um, the full review and transparency of of the budget has been provided to the entire uh council, including Councilmember Dennis. So we just want to make sure that we continue to give um everyone, including the public, accurate information about the budget process to the extent that any of this again uh just becomes rel- the budget process to the extent that any of this again, just becomes relitigation of conversations already had, decisions already made. Those points are not germane to the extent that any of it extends to essentially being attacks on prior decisions by the council or misrepresentation of requirements of the law. Those issues are problematic. I would turn it back to the, to you.
I would just like to say that I believe they are germane when we talk about the budget. And there is no misrepresentation. I apologize if I have not received it. If the administration could send me the purchasing card, card ledger of the mayor, the city administrator and the city attorney. I would appreciate that because I must have missed that in some kind of.
Madam President, I can respond to that point.
Thank you.
Perhaps is being missed is that councilmember Dennis was directly told just now that she's provided all of that information through.
I don't have it. I'm sorry.
Through the standard process that is provided to all of council, you approve every expense item. It's in the agendas.
There's a link to it in every single agenda where we're approving the monthly expenses. It's one of the first few consent agenda items.
I'm so sorry. It must be my autism or ADHD, my learning disability. I apologize. I, I, could you just send it to me and highlight the ledger on those? I apologize. It must be my fault.
Go back to the agendas on our website.
You just resend it to me, please. I'm just, that's a simple, reasonable request. Thank you. Shouldn't take up much staff time if that's.
We won't, we won't be doing that, council, council president. We won't be going back through and to the extent that councilmember Dennis is trying to make a tie to.
I'm not making a tie.
Mr. Spinner Craig has the floor. That's your first warning.
Ongoing pending litigation. That's just an example of what's inappropriate about this discussion. We have lots of room here to move on to legitimate topics about the budget. And I'm sure that administrators Elms would welcome those questions.
May I please speak? Now, is, is the staff done? Thank you.
Continue in order.
Thank you. Again, everything I'm speaking here is about the budget, so I believe it is germane. And so I have a couple, I have several questions, but one of them, I'm just going to go back just right now in tonight's discussion. City administrator Zelm said, we have looked across the budget and we make reductions where we can. Could you give me several examples of where you have looked across the budget and made reductions where you could? Administrator, thank you. Examples that could show that was substantial in the budget reduction. Thank you.
Councilmember Dennis, as I mentioned, the actual changes for the increase to the police and fire expenses for employee services that were not predicted in the original twenty twenty five budget totaled about two point seven eight million dollars. The increase that is before you for that is less than one point five million. So there has been one point three million dollars about throughout the entire budget that we look through. So we look at every single position in the budget and we adjust for what they're actually making. We make adjustments to software. We make adjustments to utilities. We make adjustments to all of the different line items based on what has actually been being expended and what is necessary for the departments. And then that is the budget that comes to you. So we also reduce all of the one-time decision packages. We, we project from that every single year and where we can, we make reductions across the budget. So that totaled over one point three million dollars in the general fund. I can't give you every single line item because we would be here forever. But you can look through the budget book that is online and see any of the line items where there is a reduction from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five. I also think it's important to clarify that most of your questions would have no impact on this budget. The city is in compliance with all of the state statutes regarding frequent flyer miles. And IRS requires that that stays with the person that has the frequent flyer miles that apply to them. We don't qualify for corporate credit cards for that. That's been answered probably many, many times. We are also in compliance with all charter and statute provisions for, for how we bid out and solicit contracts and always have been. And so I just think that that's important. And the property that was mentioned is actually on the tax rolls now and was not in the past. So that actually is reducing the cost of property tax to others.
Okay, just for my clar, my thing, my clarification here, words like many, many times, numerous times. I don't recall many, many times. If you could in the future, give exact amount of times instead of many, many, many times, numerous.
It is at least forty times.
Are a little gaslighting. I would like.
Point of order.
Do you want me to answer your question or not?
How many, yes, many time and, and city.
Dozens of times on email, on text messages, verbally, in person and at the dais when you've asked it during other.
Please move on. We're not talking about this any longer.
Couldn't be verbally because we haven't had meetings for years. So, but in, in, I do, I do keep emails, so I do not believe dozens are in my record. I would just like to, okay, so I'm going to say I would, I think, I don't agree that we should be cutting personnel. We need livable wages. I don't think we should be micromanaging the amazing library. The last city administrator, administrator Reimer did a phenomenal job with this team staff, which I.
We actually created that while I was working here. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Allison Zelm takes credit of this. I'm sorry, but with this, we have this budget, this wonderful principles, priorities. And that's where we come back to and the library falls into this and the welcoming and conclusive. So instead of penny pinching situations like that, I think we do need to find more oversight when it comes to competitive bidding. Hopefully whoever takes my place will find those line items and, and be able to do that. I think some of these are distractions, are very beautiful presentations. I give extreme gratitude to all the staff who put the work into making these colorful PowerPoints. I would just like to see some more of the numbers and I must have missed it. It must have been on my, my plate where I missed the email. If someone could resend those, that would be great.
I would like to. Sending that it's provided to you within your agenda packet.
I don't know why you're keeping information from the city council.
I think.
Councilmember Dennis, you're out of order.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Your final warning.
Okay, okay. So the employee related situation, I do have to say, I do not believe we should cut our employee salaries or cut, you know, things, but the explanation of these positions could be a little bit better. For example, I was in passing and I asked, what's the difference between the deputy city administrator and the assistant city administrator? I asked this to someone who would know this answer because they hold that position. And their answer was, oh, pay. And so when, when a council member and, or anyone asks, what's the difference between a deputy city administrator and an assistant city administrator? And the answer from that person holding that position is the difference is pay. That makes me feel like maybe we're having positions that aren't clearly defined or that we're having increased salaries and positions created that maybe aren't needed or can be done differently. So I think that should also be looked at in.
I think that it's important to answer what is actually either a misstatement or maybe it's intended to be a question. Across all of our, our positions, we actually have a pointing system that we use. And so based on the duties related to the position, the experience required, the amount of responsibility, the amount of budget responsibility, the number of people that report to them. And the amount of other support they have across the organization that gets pointed and that is consistent across the city. That's what most cities do. And so there, there are many factors that relate to salary. And all of those happen through a very robust HR system. And that is how different positions are pointed. Each has a job description and when posted, that is also posted. So people are aware of what their responsibilities are.
Okay, I just, I think as an oversight board of the council, it'd be nice to have a little bit more explanation on some of this. Like again, I, I mentioned, nothing I have ever set up here has to do anything with any lawsuit. But it has to do with just basic accountability and unchecked power having some oversight. So I just wanted to say, I know with Mayo Unbound and a lot of changes happening, we're going to have an increase in a lot of money in our city and a lot of different changes. And I think we need to make sure that the council people are, that, that are elected to sit up here have an understanding. And if they say they don't know because they haven't been given or they can't find the email, I think it's a basic reasonable request to have that email resent. So I, I will stop that, but I just wanted to reiterate the oversight of competitive bidding audits. We could look at staffing situations. They're, I'm not staffing, but like having the roles more clearly defined. I think there's a lot of things we can do little by little that would shave down and make it so that we wouldn't have to have such a substantial tax increase. And I have been saying this, not this year, not just this year, but last year and the year before. And I know no one likes hard questions, hard honest questions. They like rubber stampers and they not, did not reelect me.
Point of order.
Member Wall.
But I do want.
Member Wall has the floor.
I find that those last statements to be uncourteous and derogatory towards people under rule three C of our procedures.
Okay, I note that. I apologize. Apologize if that was unruly. I just feel that my blunt and assertive communication, I, I, please, I appreciate you pointing out. There, I believe there is some gender bias in some situations happening, but my last, my last, my last point. Okay, I, I will.
You're at your end of your time. So can we just? Have.
Okay, I just feel like secret meetings and hidden information should end.
Thank you. Council president, council members, Mayor Norton, I don't know if at this point you want to look at anything else. But I would just point out that if you are considering any reductions to this, but before, before September, although September is when you set the preliminary levy, which impacts the tax notices that go out. And we need to make sure that we meet that deadline, after which you could still make decisions that would reduce that. I would highly recommend that you take a look at the April study session. It includes the list of decision packages that were funded in twenty twenty five, and that is the place that I would recommend that you start. But there are things that like the continuation of the eight step plan for the fire department to be able to expand in a very unique and less, much less costly way. And there are things there that I just don't think that we shouldn't fund, like continuing incident response and, and the retainer and vendor security monitoring for cybersecurity. These are things that are critical costs that, that if they're increasing and we don't do them, you are at significant risk of liability to the city. So I would just recommend that if that's what you're looking for, to be looking at that slide. It was ironically also slide twenty one of that presentation, which is the same slide where you see it here. So I, I think that it would just be beneficial to you. I appreciate all of your time today, your questions and your feedback. And just again, appreciation for the team for putting everything together.
And just to be clear, the budget flipping book and the budget summary are available very easily online.
Yes, if you go to finance department under services.
Or just search for twenty twenty four, twenty five budget.
The main page, it has all of the information for every year going back as far as we were putting those online.
Line by line, program by program in our whole city.
Correct. It looks like a book.
And it looks like a book and it's well organized.
Thank you.
And has an index you can click on to find the section you're interested in.
Correct.
Thank you. All right. Well, we have Brent Svenby here to talk about our next topic. Let him get set up, but we are talking about the twenty twenty five community development block grant allocations, which we've had some previous discussions around. So thank you for being here.
Good afternoon, council president Carlson, members of our council, Mayor Norton. I just want to point out that last Thursday was the fiftieth anniversary of the block grant program. So it started back in nineteen seventy four and Rochester became a title met community in nineteen seventy five. So, so for forty nine years, Rochester has been receiving black man funds. So today we're here to talk about the twenty twenty five allocations of block grant funding. Again, this is based on an estimate of what we think we're going to receive in twenty twenty five. I will point out that we still have not received our twenty twenty four dollars. So I think we're getting closer to receiving those. I get an email every couple of weeks from our representative in the city saying, yep, we're getting closer. But they have not released the funds yet for twenty twenty four. So hopefully within the next, surely within the next month, we get those twenty twenty four dollars. So. So I am before you and about a month earlier than I was last year with the twenty twenty four allocations. And that is because we are going through the process of developing the new consolidated plan for twenty twenty five through twenty twenty nine. So we just started that process earlier this year to accommodate the data gathering in regards to the consolidated plan. So we did post a notice in the post bulletin on June twenty eighth with an application deadline of July twenty ninth. We did send out the email to over forty organizations that have received black man funding in the, in the past or have wanted to receive notice of when it becomes available. So I did send out emails to over forty organizations. The application and notice was also posted on the city's website. And we did host a open house on July eighth to answer any questions that anybody had in regards to the CBG funding and the application itself. Our notice, our call, our call notice for the funding stated that the city was seeking those activities that fit under the public service activity of the black man program. So of the applications, we received eight, eight applications that fit under the public service activity. Some of these you have seen in the past, applied in past years and did receive two organizations that are first time request for CBG dollars. ABC submitted a request for twenty five thousand dollars and they would like to use that funding to increase the recreation, leisure, wellness and job seeking activities at the opera, their clients. The Boys and Girls Club of Rochester asked for twenty thousand dollars as they would like to expand the youth development programs that they offer at Gage and Riverside Schools. Catholic Charities, which operates a warming center, is requesting fifty thousand dollars to fund operational expenses at the warming center such as staff time, laundry services, meals for those parent, people experiencing homelessness. The Massus Way reentry has been a long time funding recipient of CBG dollars. They are looking to expand a program currently offering the cities. They would like to bring that program down here to Rochester. It's father and youth focused. Family of Fromis Rochester is a new requestee of CBG dollars. They requested twenty thousand dollars to help in operational expenses of the family shelter that they operate. Apparently they operate a family shelter in the Cussey Park neighborhood. And then they are going to operate one that, they'll need a county purchase in southeast Rochester. They're taking over operations of that building next year. Hiawatha Homes requested twenty thousand dollars to purchase and convert a accessible van to their clientele. Jeremiah Program is requesting forty thousand dollars to expand the one-on-one family coaching program that they offer. Twenty twenty four is the first year that we funded Jeremiah Program. So they are releasing funding in twenty twenty five. And then the Landy Minnesota requested thirty five thousand dollars. They are a new requestee. And they would like to expand resources at the day center. Based on our projected CBG dollars, no more than fifteen percent of our funding can go to public service activities. So we are anticipating that we will receive about six hundred and seventy two thousand dollars. That could go up or down. We won't go until early, early next year. So based on that, we can allocate no more than one hundred and eight thousand, one hundred, eight, eight hundred dollars of funding towards public service activities. And you will see that the applications we receive, the total request is two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. We did receive one application that did not fit under public service activities. That was a request by Bear Creek Services for nine thousand five hundred and fifteen thousand, nine thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars for the construction of a sidewalk at one of their group homes. But based on the city's adopted citizen, citizen partition, partition plan for the CBG, the only applications that the city were asking for would be public service activities. So if the council did want to fund very quick services, they would need to amend our citizen participation plan. And we would also take, have to take funding away from a recommended dollar amount for twenty twenty five. Started back in twenty twenty, we did create a steering committee as part, when we updated the citizen partition plan. The steering committee is made up of individuals from the public libraries, park and rec department, police department, public works department, party department and community development. We do kind of rotate individuals off that committee. They usually serve on a three or two year term and we try to find someone else in the community or from the city to take their spot. And then this year we had a co-design group that we created when we did the consolidated plan. So we did ask to. So we did ask two members of the co-design group to join the steering committee. However, on the day that we met back in August ninth, only one of the co-design members could attend that meeting. We did create a application scoring sheet a number of years ago that talks about timeliness. Can they spend those dollars in a timely fashion? What effectiveness does a project have on the community? How does that align with the council's priorities and also the priorities found in the consolidated plan? And if the project had been previously funded by the city? In total, there were eighty-five points possible. So we met back in August ninth with the steering committee, and years passed. I had provided to steering committee with my recommendation based on my scoring of the applications. This year I did not do that because I wanted the steering committee to have more discussions on the applications that we received, and they had a great discussion that day. And just, I would say briefly, the steering committee really wanted to fund the two, two new organizations requesting CBG dollars. So that would be the landing and family promise, and they felt that they wanted to fund, or they're recommending that we fund family promise, the twenty thousand dollars that they're asking for. And then they recommend that we fund twenty thousand dollars of the landings request for the landing. And then of this six other organizations we're asking funding, they just kind of looked at it and said, let's give them thirty-five percent on their request to make up that hundred thousand, eight hundred dollars. If you do the math on that, you will notice that Damascus Way is a little bit less than five thousand dollars. So they wanted to give that little main part to Damascus Way to bring them over five thousand dollars. So the recommendation by the steering committee for the eight applications, you can see on the screen before you, that add up to the hundred and eight, one hundred, one hundred thousand dollars, eight hundred dollars. And then making up the remainder of the CBG dollars, we have dollars into program administration, what goes to cover staff salaries for the individuals who administer the CBG program itself. So myself and Adam Frock in our department, and also goes to cover, covering publication costs of throughout the year. We have to publish certain things in the post bulletin. And then we threw about the bulk of the dollars into the rehab program. One would be the single family rehab program of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. With that, we tried to rehab at least ten to fifteen projects a year, and that's probably the longest running program that the city has used CBG funding to. And then recently, we've started looking into offering a rental rehab program. And in the past, we've done a four unit building. We're currently in the process of doing another four unit building, but we are looking to increase that dollar amount up to hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that would allow us to do up to six units as a rental rehab project. And they also have administrative costs with the rehab program of seventy-five thousand dollars. That also goes to our staff time in the rental rehab area. And they also continue, we have an MOU with the county where we have the look test them from the county who does the bid reviews with the property owners and the review of all the work that's being done in the rehab area. And that range, that leaves remaining about a hundred thousand dollars. In the past couple of years, we have recommended putting those, those dollars into a neighborhood ADA pedestrian ramp improvement project. So graciously, over the last couple of years, we have funded that program about a hundred thousand dollars a year and does allow our Public Works Department to go out into those low and moderate income neighborhoods where there may be a street project in the coming years. It gets them out there a year in advance to fix those intersections and make them ADA compliant, so. You can see the recommendations from the steering committee. And how are the CBGs unspent? About six, three point nine percent of, of funding goes to those activities that are considered affordable housing activities. One point one percent goes to youth program, nineteen, or twelve point nine percent goes to infrastructure activities, and twenty-two point one percent goes to administration activities. So this does look kind of different from how we've done it in the past, but in talking with our consultant who's writing consolidated plan for us, which will include our annual action plan, the recommendation was that we present the recommendations to the council today, and then they will take our recommendation I just showed you, complete the draft version of the consolidated plan and annual action plan, and then we'll bring that to the council on September twenty-third for an open, for opening of the public comment period on that plan. And that comment period will stay open for until November fourth. At that time, we'll ask the council to close the public hearing and then make your final recommendations on twenty twenty-five CBG allocations.
Thank you so. Yes, so thank you so much, Brent. So just as I'm listening to you, you know, it's a great list of organizations doing really important work. But having worked for several funding organizations, sometimes it's harder to do it this way, but in my opinion, sometimes better to do it this way where you fund fewer for more of what they need, because if you're funding a sliver of something that they're not able to otherwise fund, it's not effective. So just wondering how the group thought through that circumstance? Was the goal to actually fund all of those that applied that met the criteria at some level?
Yep, and I mean, they all felt that every organization was worthy of some funding. And if you look at the budgets of organizations, most of their funding comes from grants, donations, contributions, and each of the organizations said, well, if you don't get funded one hundred percent, they'll have to look at other means to filling that funding gap. So the steering committee felt comfortable that if you didn't fund them completely, that they would have other means to fill that gap in their funding for the project.
I mean, that might be the case for a nine thousand dollar gap, but a twenty-six thousand dollar gap. I mean, that's a big chunk of money for a nonprofit to have to additionally raise if they are looking at the city as the source of funding. So I'm a little bit uncomfortable with this, actually seeing thirty-five percent of the funding request, just knowing it's such a short window of time, and if they're hoping to spend the money on something that they had planned. I don't know.
I mean.
Good list of organizations.
At this point, it gives them, it'll give them like a whole year basically to try to fill that gap, because if the allocations are made in November, typically won't get our money until.
September.
August, September of next year. I mean, they have that eight or nine month window to seek additional funding to fill that gap.
Okay, I'll think about it. Councilmember Bransford.
Yes, I am here. One thing I wanted to point out about really more the scoring in relation to an actual entity on the list that's been recommended funds is ABC. Now, ABC is interesting because they're looking for job activities, trying to hire. And one of the things missing from this, it, it, it's a little bit like a couple differential equations, right? You know, like there's too many variables and not enough equations. But what they provide for the community is really important. We have a large population of, of individuals that have cognitive and physical disabilities. And one of the big hindrances to an organization like that is staffing. So by giving this money to an organization like ABC, we actually can allow them to hire, which is tax money. It's, it, there's, there's, there's a lot of wins there. So and maybe it's here and I'm not seeing it, but part of the project effectiveness could be the turnaround as an investment into an organ. And that may be true for the other ones. I was picking on ABC because I know it, and there may be other entities, organizations, I should say, that would do the same thing. But it's, I think, really important when you talk about a block, like a community block grant. The community is also people who they hire and give back, right? So for me, that should be an additional point proposal. I, and I'm not saying we do it. I'm not making an amendment, da, 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 da. I'm just thinking in the future, think about ways in which the scoring could be adjusted, because, hey, if they're going after funding to advertise for employees, we help a lot of people out that way. So just, just, just a thought.
Yeah, and we had some discussions after our steering committee as far as changing our application of questions that we're asking for to make it more clear how they're reaching the community in general, so.
All right, Councilmember Wall.
Thank you. Could you tell me, is, is twenty-two percent pretty common for administrative costs for this kind of grant?
Yeah.
Okay, which is significant to me, but if that's what it is.
Okay, Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, a couple of things. As far as the, the, so these are the ones we, we heard back from, and the timing. You bring up the fact that we haven't been funded yet this year. We're looking at next year. I, I do like the idea that we have a process and that we're, that we fit people into it. That idea of how they ended up like using the money at the end with the, but in, in, in the application, it does give that first year groups the higher point totals than the other ones. So they were not funded more as people experiencing homelessness. That was not a criteria. It was.
But it's one of the criteria in the scoring worksheet as far as what population the community is it.
Okay.
directed towards, but yeah. And then also steering committee looked at, well, these are first time requests of CBG funds, and they felt they wanted to give them more funding than the other, because they wanted to find all eight, all eight agencies, so.
Okay, all right. The other question is a little bit different, just on your recommendations for the full funds, and you have the rehab activities being about four hundred thousand dollars. Help me out with like the absorption rate on this, because I understood that we, we haven't had our twenty twenty-four money go out yet. Has the twenty twenty-three money been leveraged and used by between the county and?
We're still spending that dollars, yep.
Yeah, I, I guess I've heard, and I'm, I'm sort of asking, is this money when we, and I'm specifically talking about the rehab activities, and it is loans. It's not, it's, so is that like coming to bear quickly? Or is the twenty twenty-five numbers probably going to use maybe twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven? Is it timely? Because I'm of the impression it's not.
No, I just looked at those the other, last week, and I think right now our balance in their single family rehab account is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then looking at the project lists, there are projects that are nearing completion. I'm projecting that we'll have those projects completed by end of the year. We'll burn through that hundred fifty thousand dollars, and we start, we have projects in the pipeline now that will start construction or rehab work the next couple of months, which will be digging into our twenty twenty-four dollars.
Okay, so it is a little more timely than I'm, than I'm.
Oh, yeah.
I'm seeing.
We used to have a lot more money in that account, but we've been, last couple of years, didn't put much towards that rehab account.
Okay.
There's a large balance in there, but now we're kind of getting to the point where I'm getting kind of nervous there is, are we going to have enough funding to, because we always have that late time of our CBG funding, so.
Okay, well, that's helpful, because I was, my, my concern was that we're putting money into it, even though the last year's money hasn't been, been used yet. And just to say if it's timely, is there other things we should be able to do with it? Last sort of, just clarify for me, I know there's a steering committee, but I thought it was a mix of outside and city employees. It looked much more like city employees and co-development.
Co-designer.
Co-designers.
Yep, so we had like five employees from the city, and I wanted two members of the co-design group because of our members of the co-design. Three, no, three of, no, two of the six had submitted applications.
Okay.
For funding, so most people dropped off because they don't have those people behind the steering committee since their organizations requested funding. So then it went with two of the four remaining to, to serve in the steering committee.
Okay, last question. When the, and when the application goes out, is this application scoring log aware, are they aware of what the scoring is?
Yep.
Okay.
We sent an attachment along with it also that has more information on the program.
Good, thank you.
Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you. I've participated in this program for about twenty years, and it's changed quite a bit. And so I'm looking at the screen you have right now. I have a couple of questions. Screen right now, can I take rehab activities and move it down to the ADA pedestrian ramps? Or are they stuck in those categories? Does the federal government allow me to take that four hundred and seventy-five thousand and move it down to ADA ramps if I want to?
Well, we have to, when we do our action plan, we have to make an activity for the activity, so we have to describe what the activity is.
So you have it, you have ADA or pedestrian ramps at a hundred thousand. Could you take a hundred thousand out of the rehab and push it to that?
You could, but then you're taking money away from the single family rehab program.
Well, yes, that's.
Yeah.
Okay, we're making a decision.
Correct, yeah.
To do more ramps quicker than twenty-seven years. That, that would be our decision.
That'd be your decision, correct.
Okay, let's go back to the page of, oh, there it is. What I don't like about this is, well, A, I'm assuming that the five city employees are all city residents. Do we, we talked about that?
I didn't verify where they live, other city employees.
Well, the last time we talked about this, I asked if they were, and you weren't sure, but.
I said I wasn't sure if they're city employees or not, and I didn't.
Well, I prefer them to be city employees because.
City employees.
Or city, city residents, I apologize. So that's just my preference. What I don't like here is that you have one percent going to, or one point one percent going to youth, and affordable housing, you have sixty-three point nine. Is that including the seat, the, the rehab money, or is that just what's above on the public service activity?
No, it includes the rehab money, and it includes, probably the landing, the Catholic charities, those activities.
Family promise would be.
Are those to be affordable housing?
Like goes towards an affordable umbrella, affordable housing.
Is the category affordable housing or is it housing?
Well, I mean, to me, and that's what the kind of confusion we have is we have housing funds and we have homeless funds, and I don't see where that, they, they shouldn't be mixed in there. So last year, Catholic Charities, we gave them five thousand dollars, and, and they survived on that. We gave Damascus Way nothing. In Hiawatha Homes, we're giving them seven thousand dollars out of twenty thousand to buy a van, which to me, I would rather see us fund the full van and do that. I see Jeremiah Program, I, I look at a couple of these in a different way, and I look at, at Family Promise. I look at Jeremiah Program as being preventative of homelessness, and I would rather see our money go there than to go to like the landings into Damascus Way and Catholic Charities. And so we can prevent homelessness, not deal with it after it's been done. And I'm assuming when this comes to us in November fourth, that I could make that motion and, and move those dollars around. Is that the?
Point of order, Damascus Way is not about homelessness. It's about post incarceration support, so people can get jobs and housing after being incarcerated.
Okay. But November fourth, then it would take four of us to move the money around and, and, and put it where, where we believe it should be?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
And we did, Damascus Way did receive funding in twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Right, Councilmember Dennis.
All right, thank you. So I, I looked at the city staff who are on here. I think that is a good representation of city staff. But if you had to get rid of some of the co-design participants because there is a potential conflict of interest, is that correct, right, for funding? Okay, and I think that's good not to have conflict of interest for sure when it comes to giving money out. Why wasn't more people added then if, you know, if they had four, six, however many, and had to go down to two co-designers? Why wasn't there more robust search to make sure more of the community is heard on this steering committee?
Because I was, this, I was trying to pick people that served through the process earlier this year when we did a consolidated plan. So those people served in the co-design process. And there were six individuals on that committee that we had developed to help guide the drafting of the consolidated plan. So they were familiar with the CBG program and what the priorities are of the program for the city. So that's why there's only six people to pick from, two were head organizations that requested funding, and then two of the four I picked.
Okay, so, okay, maybe help my understanding here. I guess I have a lot of understanding I need help with. But wouldn't fresh eyes be beneficial even? Would they have to have insight into the grant funding process? Couldn't you bring people with diverse backgrounds, you know, find four more people saying, hey, we really want your insight on how we're allocating this money? Why did that have to be from the original? Why did that have to be from the original group? I mean, just help me, maybe I'm missing something.
I guess that was my choice, I mean, that was my decision to select someone that I thought were the people that were familiar with the program. And that's why I went to those individuals that were in the co-design process. Sure, I could have, I went out community and find other individuals to serve on the steering committee, which I surely can look at that for next year. It would be, yeah.
I think that would be great because people who have allegiances, I mean, if you have a pension with the city, right? What your allegiance is probably is with the city with, you know, I'm not going to say people's allegiances. But I think having representation from a diverse population of the community would be good for the future. I think two is not enough. And then partnerships, and I guess, I mean, I I'm, you know, on the oversight, agency oversight committee and. But when it comes to this group, has it been looking at, just help me out, like partnerships with. You know, there's a lot of money in this city, more and more coming in. And this is a drop in the bucket to a lot of different, you know, pots of money. What have, you look at people who say, well, match this grant, this, you know. Have they looked at that way of trying to fill in the gaps? And we have, our hands are a little bit tied with, although I mentioned many ways we could lower the tax levy potentially. But our hands are a little bit tied with with the levy situation. What can, has there been creative thoughts, innovative ways of looking outside the box? I mean, I've been to conferences and there's so many ways of partnering with different agencies to make up funds. Has that been looking at, you can, you can think of this, the big powers in our city partnering with some people who might be able to. Say, hey, we'll pay, we'll we'll do this amount of the grant, you know, can we work with someone to?
Yeah, I think that's what the agencies do if they don't have the funding, they have to go to another agency in the community to find that.
But can the city do that? I mean, I can, I I'm not involved in the steering committee, so I don't know. Can't the city say, hey, reach out to people know people, I mean, people are, staff are married to people in DMC. And I mean, can can they look at talking to people who are. You know, saying, hey, we are really wanting to make this budget work for each one of these wonderful organizations. I can't pick and choose, I think they all do phenomenal service. Can we, you know, talk to our connections and our hire, you know, and make it work? Because I think the city has more leverage when it comes to connections and maybe some of these nonprofits might have. To fill in the gaps, so I just, I don't know, has that been looked, has that been looked at trying to use our networks? To make this happen for each organization?
So I don't know if you've ever attended the funding group that meets regularly, but it does bring together funders across the community from the. Private sector and our foundation and Mayo Clinic and. I mean, it might be worth occasionally participating and having conversations about whether there's a shared opportunity. What?
I I I'm uncomfortable with this whole discussion, we've got very specific process to distribute our CDBG thing. And now to say, we're going to open this up to be, we're going to be the funding organization.
No, 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 I, I know, it's very, very restricted, but just having an understanding of how other entities are funding, I don't think that's a negative thing.
But but I I heard a request for the city to be, take on this role and I want no part.
I think most of the organizations are probably aware of other organizations and that.
I mean, it's a pretty small funding community here, it's like five entities that meet regularly.
And then my last question, so I see these great organizations, there are so many more out there. I'm not going to give names or anything, but. Are, how, when you go through applications, how is that, how do you pick these? You know, groups over all the other quieter nonprofits? The ones who might not have the connections or the loudest voice?
These are the applications that we received. And we we post a notice in the post bulletin. I send out emails to organizations that the application window is open. So we only can react to the applications that we receive.
Okay.
I mean, it'd be great to be able to spread a wider net in the community. Just don't know how we get that done, but. This is what we received, we received eight applications for public service.
Maybe go into some of these groups that President Carlson and, you know, just more grassroots saying, hey, we're from the city. Here, we're going to kind of spoon feed, we're going to give you these applications, please. And I I think there are so many worthy causes that might not have the knowledge of this happening, so.
And I think a lot of times, some organizations may be turned off the black map requirement because it is, you apply for it in one year and you wait a whole year before you get your funding. And then we ask that you spend that funding within.
Yeah, I think there's a reason we have more established nonprofits applying, because there are also federal funds that have requirements along with them. One more time, the co-design, the plan. Is the goal to fund more entities or have more impact from a few? I'm still really struggling.
The goal is just to fund those activities that meet up, that meet the councils or the priorities in the solidity plan.
Yep.
And they have to serve low and moderate income individuals.
Yep.
Doesn't give you a number of, we want to serve five organizations or we want to fund two organizations. It's just, you need to meet the. Requirements of the block grant program to fund. Organizations that serve low market individuals, urgent need or reduce or eliminate light.
So you could choose, I'm not saying I would do this, but you could say. Four of the eight organizations are going to be fully funded because they meet these criteria and scored the highest and still aligns with the goals of our program. Those are hard decisions, they really are, but on the other hand, if we're trying to have an impact, funding something at six thousand.
That's what the steering community struggled with, I mean, they're they're all great organizations and they want each one to receive some type of funding. So that's why we can't exclude one, we need to fund them all. That's what they came up with for a recommendation for.
It's not what I would do, but. Did you want to add something?
I'll just say, we've had these interesting discussions every year with this fund and and I do think if we want to change the direction. To do something as as has been suggested. I I think this, you know, this may or may not be the time to do it. It is something, I share your concerns when people get just a little bit and they're not able to do the big thing that they had in mind. They end up doing little things that maybe don't have the impact that everyone had hoped for. So I share that concern and would love to see us maybe talk about it.
For next.
Outside of this approval process for next year.
Sure, sure, I appreciate that. Councilmember Palmer.
Yeah, I will point out, and I learned this from you last year, that if if we took a program and gave them zero, they weren't allowed to apply the next year, is that correct?
Well, they could, they just have to have a new activity.
So like, like Catholic charities, we gave them five thousand last year because if we didn't, they wouldn't be able to apply for.
And there were, we started funding Catholic charities when the Worms Center first started, so we can continue to fund them with no change in their. Organization or no change in their activity, but like the. Damascus Way, they had to come up with a new activity in order for us to fund them. So they came up with a new new program, they want to offer their clientele. Otherwise, we couldn't, if they came back and said, we want to fund the same activity that we did last year, you can't do that.
My point being the Catholic charities, we gave them five because we gave them zero last year, they couldn't ask for the same program this year.
Correct.
That's, that's the.
But they're not really changing their activity at the Worms Center, it's, thank you, constant.
Well, I appreciate how much work this is for a hundred thousand dollars of, I mean, it really is, ends up being one of our hot topics of the year, but. Thank you for all you do and hopefully there's some good considerations for future.
Thanks.
All right, Ms. Elms, do you want to come back up for study session schedule?
Sure, thank you, very quickly, just a reminder that November, November, my gosh, I time jumped. September second is a holiday, Labor Day, so you don't have a study session or a council meeting, meaning that September ninth becomes the first Monday. For a council meeting in September, and then your next study session is on the sixteenth. RPU update, clock tower update and UDC updates. And then you can see continuing at the end of September, an update on the sales tax, supply and transformation and legislative session recap. Slash getting you ready for next session, so that's what we have.
All right, thank you, have a good night, everybody.